Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the order the Monday, February 3rd Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. Before the adoption of the agenda, I'd like to, everyone so pleased, to pull out of the consent agenda, the resolution which reads E.5 for Gary Settle, and go ahead and move him up on the agenda to basically the first presentation. If that's the motion, I'll second it. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, thanks, sir.
Okay, Dr. Frisby is here to, oh, excuse me.
Go straight into the other side.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Settle? The resolution of appreciation and congratulations for Colonel Gary T. Settle, Virginia State Police Superintendent, retired. Whereas Gary T. Settle is a native of Rappahannock County, who has served its citizens in many public roles, including high school baseball coach, volunteer firefighter, Chair of the Planning Commission, sheriff, and most recently Colonel and Superintendent of the Virginia State Police. And whereas he has served the public safety interests of the community for nearly forty years, including serving two Virginia governors as the thirteenth Superintendent of the Virginia State Police, and whereas having served the local and statewide communities for more than half of his life, on February 1st, 2025, Colonel Settle retired from the Virginia State Police. And whereas his dedicated service was felt in innumerable ways by all in our community and is, and he is admired for having served with the highest degree of integrity, now therefore be it resolved, that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest appreciation and congratulations to Colonel Gary T. Settle for his lifelong commitment to, excuse me, and actions in public service, especially his lifelong dedication to public safety. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant, adopted this third day of February 2025.
So, we went to Richmond last week for his official retirement ceremony, and I wasn't about to get up in front of all 500 and some people that were there. So, we bought some things and we wanted to present them to him today. It's always been nice, whenever we've called, he's always answered the phone. He belongs to us, he may have helped other counties, but he belongs to us. So, we wanted to hand him back to say thank you for all that you do for us. And again, this isn't as big as the FBI's, but we got you this, and it says, "Pledge allegiance to Colonel Gary T. Settle, thank you for your dedicated service to the citizens of Rappahannock County and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Congratulations on your retirement, Godspeed." And it's got a Rappahannock Sheriff's Office badge. And we appreciate all that Kelly does to give him to us whenever we need any. So, we got you guys a gift certificate to the Blue Door, so you can take your bride out for dinner.
Leave your phone at home.
Yes.
And of course, we've got you this big happy retirement card. As you get older, it's hard to see, trust me, I know. And it says, "Congratulations on your retirement, Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office, we will miss you," and a quote from the Bible, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God." So, congratulations on your retirement, we're proud of you. Oh, yes. One more. These are now that you can relax in the backyard. There are a couple of classes that we had made for you to ice cream.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for all that you do.
Just, I'll keep it short. I don't like these kind of things. I think, now the sheriff I saw that last week, I'm probably the most nervous when these kind of things happen. But I appreciate it, I'm very humble, I'm glad to be home. Oh, gosh, I had to pinch myself every morning when I'd go up my bed and go outside just looking at the mountains. And even when I played golf yesterday, it was 37 degrees. You know, I'm losing it. But I appreciate the board, the chairman chair, all of you for what you do, it's a thankless job sometimes, but I know in Richmond, I watched how you keep county government going, and I appreciate that very much. It's a thankless job, as I say, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
God bless all of you. Sheriff, I remember when she said he was a young deputy. And I was a sheriff, one of the best, told that story last week, and I mean that whole heartedly. Thank you for your service and all the men and women in Rappahannock County. You all make it look easy, but I know it isn't. This is not easy, but thank you for what you do, God bless you. Honey, thank you.
All right, thank you all for that. Now, onto the presentations in the order that we normally have them. Uh, Dr. Frisby.
Good afternoon from Panther Nation, it's so good to see Colonel Settle. I know he was our convocation speaker last year and literally brought the house down. He was amazing. We always love to see him, we're so glad he's home. It's hard to believe we are already at this point in the year. In fact, this week, students will be celebrating the 100th day and the 101st day of school. Each day, dressing as either a 100-year-old person or with a Dalmatian spotted theme for 101. The last month has been truly remarkable at our CPS, even with the very strange winter weather pattern that freed us shortly after holiday break, even still, our Panthers were able to achieve great things. The RCHS Scholastic Hole team placed third in the Bull Run District Tournament. Ruth Cussette received first-team All District, and Emma Brown received second-team All District. We are so proud of our Rappahannock scholars. RCES students are participating in a school-wide spelling bee this month, showcasing their talents in phonological awareness and literacy. Each class participates in their own spelling bees and sends the grade-level winners onto the school-wide tournament. Once all individual class feats are completed, the school-wide assembly will be scheduled. Winter weather isn't all that bad, just ask the 133 people who signed up for the Rappahannock Ski Club. Their program opened a couple of weeks ago, where students in 5th and 12th grade meet after school on Fridays and travel to Bryce Ski Resort for an evening of skiing and snowboarding. The program will run through the end of February. Our CPS is incredibly grateful to Shana Volmerik for all her leadership in outreach in growing this amazing program. Speaking of amazing programs, Spark Summer Camps will be returning this summer, and registration will open on February 17th to all current K through 6th grade students on a first-come, first-served basis. This year's camp will be offered for eight and a half weeks, beginning on June 2nd and ending August 1st. Busing, food, program supplies, and all field trip costs will be included in the registration fees. More details will be coming soon. The Fit Kids Telehealth Clinic is expanding to include an access to Care Pilot Project in partnership with Rapid Home. Through this pilot, Rapid Home friends will be able to schedule appointments for urgent care visits at the Telehealth Clinic at RCES during our normal clinic hours. Patients can be diagnosed and treated for conditions such as strep ear infections, COVID, flu, rashes, and more. The pilot program will test the viability of the clinic being more accessible to the public and evaluate the possibility of expanding the program farther to the general public as well as providing additional services. Finally, a quick word about heat. The boilers at both buildings are fully functional and are heating properly. On January 21st at the high school, a boiler stopped working due to a wheel malfunction that severed electro cables. The boiler only supplied heat to the cafeteria and gym while the rest of the building's heat sources were functional. Therefore, our CPS did come to school, albeit on a delayed schedule, and the issue was resolved by noon the same day. Then on January 27th, the mechanical linkage became loose at the other boiler at RCES, causing an issue with the fuel mixture. While the issue was resolved by 10:00 a.m., the closed-loop heating system required additional time to fully distribute heat throughout the building, and no school could be held that day. As you can see, we have so many great things going on in our small, light school system, even when navigating challenging winter weather scenarios, but we thank you so much for all you do to continue to support our students and staff. We look forward to the Joint School Board Board of Supervisors meeting next week to discuss our instructional and operational needs and challenges as we develop the FY26 school budget. As always, thank you for your questions and as well as providing the opportunity to clarify any areas of concern. You have any questions?
I do, I have a question about Spark. I know last year was really, really popular, right?
What?
It didn't get, it filled up very quickly, right?
It did, it filled up very fast. However, we do hold a certain number of slots for summer school-eligible students, which we won't know until later in the spring. So, those students get to go to Spark free of charge as long as they go to their summer school sessions.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
And so, if folks ask, sign up quickly.
Sign up quickly, yes, it will fill up.
Has it grown since last year, or is it the same size it was last year?
Oh, we did, based on our numbers last year, did bring it up to a little over 100 campers. Now, with all children served with our counselors, it was well over 150 students altogether. So, we fully anticipate those will fill up quickly, yes.
That's great.
What's the current ADM?
So, with our current ADM, we're looking at, was about 776, well, enrollment, sorry. ADM was right about 740, which is about where the governor's projection is.
I did want to thank you too for issuing a statement about the, I don't know if it was a coincidence that you issued it shortly after I asked for it, or if you issued it because I asked for it.
I was typing it right as you said.
But in a way, I was really glad to receive it because I think on social media, people are very well intentioned, but sometimes stories spin out of control, and it was, it was great to get the facts about what was happening in full time, and that way we could address it. And, and I, I know that I've mentioned it, and you said, well, it's maybe not that easy, but I do think it would be wonderful if there was an issue with an infrastructure problem like that at one school, if you had a plan that could pivot the students to the other school. Especially the elementary school children, because that is childcare for working parents, and when their day is canceled at the last minute, it's, it's really tough on those working families. And that, that's my unreasonable request for today. Unreasonable requests are the future ideas for tomorrow.
Well, along those lines, having a child in the school that was said to have, you know, that experienced some issues, I, I first want to tell you, he never complained. He never complained, he never said he was cold. Of course, he walked out of the house with just a hoodie, and he knew better than to come home to my house and complain about being cold. Second, I was in the school on that Wednesday selling concessions during the basketball game, and I want to commend the employees of the school system, the way they handled everything was beautiful, it was professional, and ever optimistic. So, and I would be happy to share pictures with people of kids in shorts, not basketball players, and only hoodies and only sweaters on that night as well. Not saying it wasn't cold, but, but I'm just saying it was handled from where I sit and what I experienced personally and what I saw through my, my own child, it, this too shall pass, and it did, and, and everyone, I think, learned many things.
Well, at the end of the day, if people are really uncomfortable with their children being in school, they think it's too cold or whatever the case, then they can come pick their child up, or keep them off the bus, or whatever they need to do.
And I think with regards to the meeting, you were looking to try to get any questions by this Friday, so that you have a little time to prep for.
Yes, if you have any of those questions that you'd like addressed in the meeting or discussion points that we can bring, provided some prepared materials for you, it's always helpful to have a little extra time to do so.
Are we having a bus deep dive again this year?
I think we covered that.
I don't want to steal, I hear thunder, but buses are always.
I will, I will tell you that I thought about your very convincing analysis that you provided last year, and I thought about it because this morning I saw Jerry Gobel drive by with an empty bus, which still leaves questions in my mind about how this is all working, and I, I still have questions about, as I've said before, a tarmac full of 747s or triple sevens, when we should really have a mix of using the aviation map for, you know, make some regional jets and prop planes.
Can we get some of that?
But I just, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I know you guys, I know you gave us some very in-depth analysis about optimization of the fleet. I'm glad you brought it up, because it was on my mind, and I don't always want to be the bad guy in this regard, but I come, I keep coming back to this idea of a small, nimble school system, and setting aside what we might or might not get in terms of additional funding from the state, we've got to figure out how we, how we reduce meaningfully the overall school budget in that time of decline in enrollment, and the, the advertisement out on the road, literally, for a lot, that draws a lot of people's attention, is the fact that you have these big school buses, and I, I just don't know that. Thanks, thanks.
I heard, I heard about it last week, so it's the thought.
Yeah, so, I mean, listen, you go through this with us every year. You and us Whit are very responsive, you're very analytical, you provide us the data, the analysis on the request. I come back to the idea of, we've got to keep asking hard questions about how our school system is structured, because what I sometimes feel, I cannot shake this feeling, is that instead of a small, nimble school system in a rural county, what we have is a, it's sort of the trappings of a large school system that can be in a suburban area, and that doesn't make sense to me. And school, school buses are part of that. So, again, these are big philosophical questions, which we raise every year, but we're going to keep asking.
That's okay.
And it's not criticism, it's just, let us please all together ask these hard questions.
Sure, no, we all do what we ask of ourselves, and I would expect that kind of scrutiny. And we do undergo extensive route analysis each year, viewing our ridership, analyzing that, to always see, is there opportunity to reduce a route where the kids are on the bus for two hours? That's just not reasonable. So, there's the distance and where kids live, so those are analyzed, and we use the state guidelines, which we went through all of that last year, but we look at it every year. So, did the ridership change? It changes every year. So, there may be opportunities to reduce routes next year, maybe, you know, but we won't know that until we have all of our snapshot data from the ridership, actual ridership. The challenge with it is, every parent who says their child may ride a bus, you have to provide that transportation for.
Correct.
And as we find, even with the, the state funding model, when I do that report for transportation, they take one snapshot of one week in October for where your actual ridership is, actual riders, and that's how they provide. So, anyway, there's a lot of those types of analyses we have to do for that reason.
Can we help fudge those numbers? Can we let everybody know what that day is and say, hey, it's really important that every child that can ride the bus, rides the bus today or this week?
And is it, is it something we know? The hard part is when they're, they pick a week that, there's a lot of kids on athletic trips in the afternoon, and they just pull them out of, so I make sure they're.
Yeah, that is very interesting to me, that is in October, because that is one of, I mean, both the fall and the spring snows are very busy, but I, I think of how, whether a student rides the bus or not, or drives, especially in the high school, or drives to school is in large, can depend a lot on his or her after-school schedule.
Definitely.
So, yeah, they need to pick, like, the first week of school.
I know, that's what I was.
When there are no activities.
That's exactly what I said, first week of school, nothing starts, use your ridership now.
Well, I'm, I am hearing from you, not to have this conversation today, while you're sitting here, but what I'm hearing from you is, is that the way that you determine this, you are constrained by the state.
Yes.
You don't have a lot of leeway to say, Mr. Whitson is saying, say, hey, we don't need to buy this great big bus, we can buy a small one. Do you have that discretion?
We, we do, to a point where your data has to support every parent who requests that their child rides a bus, and we have some requests, and I'd say, yes, in case I have an emergency, those children have to be able to ride the bus, and actually route it that way. So, the routing is, is part of that. So, we have to route as though those kids can get on the bus, even if they don't, we still have to provide that transportation in case there's any type of emergency or anything. So, that's part of it, keeping them to a reasonable length. Now, if we can drop down, we had that discussion preparing buses, is it worth buying the small bus when the 65 passenger is just about the same and it has more capacity? You know, all of those questions come up, but those are questions and discussions we should be having, because we're at a point where we do need to make some decisions about our fleet, so.
Right.
Appreciate the discussion very much.
So, then my follow-up question is about the lobbyist.
Yes.
How's it going? Where are we?
Our lobbyist is excellent, Budget Sunday was just, this Sunday yesterday, so we're still waiting on the final Senate budget, so, but the lobbyist has been excellent and has strategized with us every step of the way, texts Gary and I just about every day about what we need to be doing, who's on what, what to watch, so, I mean, it's, it's been really great.
So, just to peg it down a little bit, what is the lobbyist doing that's great?
So, what she does is.
That would turn into something actionable, like, information is great, but, you know, like, is there any tangible?
Yes, so she, she meets with people behind the scenes, she meets with the members, she meets with the staffers, she sets up meetings for us, she finds out information behind the scenes that we wouldn't be privy to because she's there in the General Assembly Building every day, getting intel for everybody and working on the issue. So, those types of things, having a presence there has been super helpful.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, see you in a little while. Next, Mr. Whit, but speed up.
Thank you for having me here today. First, before I get started, I'd like to introduce Jason Frisby, who is our Assistant Resident Administrator for Maintenance at Warranted Residency. Jason replaced, I don't know if some of you may remember Roy Tate, who was assistant for a long time, and so Jason's come up through the ranks with VDOT and started out as an operator, and I don't think he did any time here in Rappahannock, but he worked in several areas, but he's, he knows maintenance from the ground up, and he's going to be a great asset in that position. So, if you ever have trouble getting ahold of me, I'll get you his contact and information, and Jason will take care of it. Nothing, and I know a lot of you contact David Jenkins directly, and Jason, David does a great job, and continue that, if, you know, if it's working for you, I don't have, you know, any issues with that, but we have other folks if you, if you need it. So, wanted to take care of that. Back to my report, in January, we experienced two separate snow events, as y'all remember, and the first one being a significant event was, you know, close to a foot of snow in the area, and I believe our crews did a great job, we got a lot of great comments. And we also experienced several days of freezing weather afterwards, as everybody remembers, and which prolonged the event, you know, the freezing thaw, and just took several days to, for it to go away, and I think it finally is. But in addition to thanking our crew for the great job they did, I'd like to thank the public for patience and understanding as we went through this event. And in addition to the snow events, because the snow event can take almost a week to get ready for it, dealing with it, recovering from it, so it, it does impact our maintenance schedules when we have these types of, of events. But they are, you know, kind of got back to routine maintenance activities, the gravel road maintenance, pavement patching, dead tree removal. We get a lot of, we have a, a lot of tree issues up here, as you know, and dead trees removal and debris clearing, and also dead animals. I don't know if we all, if anybody recalls that, we do have a lot of dead animals, that's almost, what, about a third of our, of our maintenance complaints we get. So, they stay busy. We're in the process of beginning the secondary six-year plan update for FY26 through 31. We haven't met with Mr. Curry yet to, to start that, but we will be meeting with him very shortly in the next few weeks to get that going. We did finish gravel road, gravel insulation and drainage repairs for Kaiser Run Road this past fall, and we will hard-surface it when weather permits this spring, and then we're going to start on Horton Holly Road this summer, a section of that that's on, next on the list for, for improvement through the Royal Rustic Program, and then we'll pave it in the spring of '26. So, we keep, keep moving on those projects. Our pavement resurfacing program for '24 is obviously a complete and successful program. We paved over nine miles of road with plant mix and almost 10 miles of surface treatment for almost 19 miles of roadway, and we also were able to widen 522 from 211 north to Hume Road with two-foot paved shoulders, which, you know, will obviously increase safety on that road. And we'll, we'll check, we usually wait at least a year after the work is done to, to check the, the crash statistics to, to hopefully get a, you know, we can measure the improvement based on crash rates, run-off-the-road type crash rates. And then, and now we're also preparing for this coming year's pavement program, not quite as, it's about half of what we did last year, but we'll be paving almost nine miles of surface treatment this year with no, no plant mix. And each year is going to be a little different depending on road conditions, so this year, basically, it's just going to be surface treatment. And we also, we are working on 20, the, the program for 2026, and, yeah, as soon as we get that finalized, I can provide any information to you for 2026, next year. We had a few traffic, traffic safety concerns this past year we worked on, one of them was runway drivers on 211. We worked with the Public Safety Committee, Sheriff's Office, collected call data that showed that there, that there was an issue with. showed that there, that there was an issue with the wrong-way drivers. We compared that with, I called the, contacted the Fall Creek County and Culpeper County Sheriff's Office to see what their call data showed, and it was, was more of the, those type calls in Rappahannock County than in those counties. So based on that, we did, our traffic engineering team did install some enhanced signage on six locations in Rappahannock County. I've got the list here, I think Gary has it, but I've, I've got the list here of the routes if you're interested. And there's a couple more that Gary asked us to look at, and we, we are in the process of looking at those. And I recently had a conversation with Supervisor Comer about, she's still getting some, you know, some calls and so my suggestion is that we, we get back with the Public Safety Committee and revisit the issue, see what the new call data is and, and see if we need to expand that or do something different. So I'm not sure who was on that committee on the board, but yeah, so y'all reach out, we'll, we'll attend the meeting and we'll continue that discussion. We also, we were able to get some HCP funds, which is our Highway Safety Improvement Program funds, to make some safety improvements at, I think it was five intersections in the county, unsignaled intersections, of course, because we don't have, don't have any signals. And so those, those improvements have been installed and I've got a list of those. It's 211 at Rock Mills Road, 211 at Tiger Valley Road, 211 at Ben, Benvenu Road, 211 at Holly Springs Road, and 211, excuse me, 231 and Slate Mills Road. So those were, were selected because of the, of the crash rates at those intersections. So we'll, we'll look at those and evaluate those after, at least, we'll let at least a year go by and evaluate those, and hopefully we'll see a reduction in crash rates there. Another, another traffic safety issue that we have been involved in is meeting with the National Park Service, Shenandoah National Park, and Mr. Curry and Sheriff's Office representative. We all met with the National Park folks last fall, or yeah, last winter actually, I think it was December, early December, and talked about Route 211 backups that leave season, fall season. So talking about ways, trying to come up with ways to mitigate that. Didn't really come up with any hard solutions other than improved communications and also perhaps having some law enforcement out there to, to help control traffic at those intersections. It was interesting that the park folks said that although there is a problem on 211, they have just as bad or worse problem inside the park because of the, the number of people who are visiting. But also, another traffic-related item is that the, the state legislature passed a law last year, I believe, to allow localities to lower their, lower speed limits on routes with, that were already posted at 25. And, and there were some other criteria, but the town of Washington actually met the criteria because it is a, considered a resident commercial district. And so their streets were already posted at 25, so they came, they, they reached out to us and wanted to lower their speed limits to 20. So we are, we have reviewed their permits, permit applications. I don't think we've actually issued a permit yet, there's a couple of revisions they need to make, but they will end up with 20 mile an hour speed limits here in town. And also, let's see, we, we did some work in Sperryville recently, this past fall, where we made some drainage improvements, trying to create, fix a longstanding problem at the intersection of Main and 522. We installed a drop inlet and tied it into the existing drainage. We had an issue with our paving contractor, our paving contractor got bought out by another paving contractor. So we had to wait till that settled out, and finally it got settled out, and what it was, the superior bought out kicking asphalt. And so we had to wait till that cleared all the legal hurdles of, involved in that, but then we're finally able to get them in and basically fix what the little issue that we had there with the, with the unfinished project. But that project has been finished and hopefully you've noticed, there's no longer a big puddle of water sitting at the corner of Main Street and 522. Also, another law that was passed last year was to allow the use of gravel road funds to improve gravel roads without hard surfacing. So, you know, we, especially in Rappahannock County, you've had an ongoing program where we pretty much every year improved at least, you know, some length of road from gravel road and hard-surfaced it. And I think it's been a great program, I'm all in favor of that. But the, there are some localities, some counties that don't want their gravel roads paved, loud as hell, say it. But, and they were able to get a law passed that allowed the use of gravel road funds that we programmed through the secondary six-year plans for projects that don't involve hard surfacing. So we have not really implemented that yet because our Richmond Maintenance Office is supposed to produce a guidance document that gives us direction on how to implement that law. So we're still waiting on that. And we've been waiting, and hopefully we'll have it here soon because we're going to be starting our second six-year plan discussions. So we're looking forward to getting that guidance. And also got, I think I got a request from Supervisor Smith about, I think last year or la- a year or two ago, we produced a year-end report. And unfortunately, my, my wildcard project, special project guy left me that did that report, he went to Dover District and so I was not, didn't really have the bandwidth to produce that, but I, I do want to produce, get you some information on safety, on crash rates in the, in the county. And I will work on that in the next couple of weeks to try to get, to get you something that at least for the last quarter, full quarter, like October through December, to show you what's going on in the county for that. And I'll try to do that every quarter, at least to let you know what's going on from a highway safety perspective. So that's pretty much what I had for today, and I'd be welcome to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thanks, Mark. A couple of things on the, since, since Chair Donahue and I are on the Public Safety Committee, we were really pushing for some kind of, call it innovative or creative solution to mitigate in the, the wrong-way driver problem, which you noted is well-documented and data demonstrate that is more than just anecdotal evidence, it is occurring frequently. I think the additional signage is fine. I worry a little bit about, and I guess under the, I'm going to be way out on a limb here, under the MUTCD standards, I think there is a principle that you don't want to overwhelm drivers with too many signs.
Right.
So my question to you is, obviously, we're going to have to see how these additional signs work, if they make any difference. And let's just say, worst-case scenario, this problem pursues, would we be able to revisit with you the possibility, particularly a significant intersection like 211 and 522, some kind of electronic vehicle-triggered device or something that says definitely don't go this way? I know of one, one intersection up near Middleburg, and I think you know the one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know, something like that, you know, because while the signage is obvious and clear to most people, it seems that the people who don't pick up on it might still not pick up on the additional signage. So I'd at least want to just, you don't have to answer now, but I just want to tell you that I don't think, I don't think we're done yet. I appreciate the initial offer. We weren't really looking for signs, but we'll take what we can get. So I think we'll continue to talk about it within our public safety body and, because it, it just has got to stop. I mean, it's so dangerous. On the, the cross-intersections, I wonder, you talked about one intersection down in 231 and the number of those intersections along 211 going east like Benvenu and Holly Springs. Could you just explain just briefly what, what measures you took at those intersections to prevent people from popping out onto 211, which is, I think, the purpose?
Okay, there, there were two things. One was the wrong ways, the wrong-way situation with 211, and the other one were the, the intersection safety improvements done by the, the HCP project. So is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, I think there, there were some, there was some kind of, I don't know if it was pavement striping or something, put on stop signs at those intersections as you're, if you're coming from the side roads.
Right.
The issue is people in the fog blowing the stop signs on any, on the highway.
Typically, and I've got lists of the improvements here, I actually had the forethought to bring it with me, was upsizing the size of the stop signs. Most of them were, some of them were 30-inch and like at Rock Mills Road, at 622, they replaced existing stop sign 30 by 30 with a 36 by 36. They added divided highway signs to the stop sign, they added two-inch red reflective, retro reflective strip on the stop sign post, installed a stop sign, a head sign with yellow restrictive reflective strip, and then extended the double yellow pavement markings.
Okay.
So they did similar things to each one.
Okay.
So they were mostly signing and marking improvements, there weren't any, you know, anything to, you know, nothing electronic or no, no turn lanes or anything.
Rumble strips or nothing like that, okay. And since you brought up this gravel road improvement fund, it reminded me that some time ago, and I think Mr. Frisbee was there, we looked at Long Mountain from Rock Mills going up to Ridgeview, and I just want to know what the status is of those additional culverts and drainage management, stormwater management efforts that were going to be placed there.
Yeah. I'm pretty certain they replaced at least one of the, the pipes that they talked about. I don't know if Jason knows the specifics, but...
Which was to plan to replace all of those drainage structures, the course that we that, you know, just getting into the new budget year, a lot of that money already committed to margins yet, all of us, once we talked about.
Okay, what's the timeline, do you think, for completion?
Hopefully we'll see where we can have this winter. Of course, we have some monies that are caught up in there until we complete winter time.
Okay.
Particularly with the budget in March, and if we don't have that money, I can communicate with you, the, our new budget comes in, of course, July first.
All right, yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be nice to push, to get that all done in the springtime, once we're past the winter weather, because that road's a perennial issue from a, like a grading and, and scraping and gravelling perspective, and it seems to never improve. And I do think that those, whatever efforts have already been made, I've heard, have made, made some difference, so I just hope that we can push that as hard as possible. And if we, to me, it just seems like a local maintenance thing, I don't understand why we would get pulled into a larger question about annual budgets and timing thereof. We're, we're not talking about a major project.
It's, it's not really, I wouldn't call it a major project either, but our, the funds that we do have are for routine maintenance, and they do allow for some, you know, drainage structure improvements, but they do have to last for the whole year, so we have to be pretty, pretty careful about where we use everything, but I will, I'll make it a, make it a point to get back with Mr. Jenkins and see, see what kind of schedule we can get.
Just from expenditure funds, maybe we could be first in line on that project, that'd be great. Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, just thank you for taking my call. And I do, to circle back around to the 211 wrong-way driving, it does happen during a casual conversation with law enforcement, my suspicion was confirmed that it does seem to happen kind of on the, the Amosville end of our county quite a bit. And I do, and I don't know if it needs to start here or at the Public Safety Committee, I do think those, the extra signs have been in place now at least longer than six months. So I think we have probably a good, good time to ask for that call data again, because I think we could get an updated snapshot to see if those signs did have an impact, you know.
Sure, we can, you know, we can revisit that when we meet next, we meet quarterly.
Yeah, let us know, we'll be happy.
That's a good question, this statement.
Yeah, let us know, we'll be happy to attend and participate.
I did have a question, Mark. It was my recollection from the meeting with the folks at the park that they would, they would be submitting a, was it a traffic management plan?
Yeah, we talked about...
That you all were going to coordinate on that?
Right, we talked about that, that typically when we, when things, when events happen that generate traffic that impacts, you know, normal flow, we require a, a special event permit. And we have not been getting that or been pushing for it because it's, it's really not a, it, it does have, it's like an event because it happens every year and you can almost set your clock by, it's going to happen sometime in the fall when the leaves turn. So we know it's coming every year, and we know a lot of people come there, so why not treat it like a special event? And that's put together a traffic management plan for that. So we asked the park to look at it from that perspective, that it's an event, it happens every year, that's planned for it, and we typically get a, a special event permit with a traffic management plan in it, that the first, the entity is responsible for providing that traffic control. Sometimes they use local law enforcement, sometimes they use state police, sometimes we assist if, as resources allow. But it's pretty much up to that entity to, to take, to lead in there, because it is, even though they're not, it's not something they put on, it's, it's as expensive a order as we can get.
They're, they're collecting the money though, so they are kind of putting it on.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
So, I mean, I think that was the upshot of that meeting, is that indeed it is, it is their event because they're in charge of admittance.
Correct.
So anything we can do to, to assist in that vein, and I think we all mentioned that, at the meeting, that there is, there are tax dollars in play that we do need to specifically spend on tourism. So if it is a matter of, of more staffing from the local sheriff's department, you know, we want to cooperate and, and help and do our part and be part of the solution for that.
And we're certainly, we'll participate in meetings as everyone can get together and do that.
And then the, the gravel road maintenance fund sounds great, and I'd be very curious to hear that guidance as soon as it's available.
I would, I am too. I'm waiting on it.
I have some suggestions already.
Okay.
You should ask, but I just have two things. Thank you for all your efforts in the county when we had that snowstorm, that was a lot, it's a lot all at once. You guys hit Red Oak, I just put a message into you guys and you guys hit the thing with sand pretty quickly, within an hour, I think, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
That makes a big difference. And also, you guys did a little bit of surfacing there on Red Oak recently, which has helped a lot. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but Red Oak Mountain Road. But anyway, thank you.
Appreciate that.
There was one thing I wanted to ask, if, if there's any way, so Company Five, which is in Scrabble, the volunteers got out and started working roads plowing. Is there any way to prioritize? It didn't get hit for a while, and then I think maybe some contractors you work with and tractors maybe hit it later? But is there any way, because, yeah, I know you hit Hope Hill, and I don't know if you have a map or a map in your brain, but you guys got close, but you didn't get to the fire station. Is there any way to prioritize that right after a storm?
We, I mean, I, I know our, you know, obviously the primary routes are first priority, second, heavier travel, secondary routes and, but we, I'm not sure where that road stands, but we'll certainly get with David, with David, and we'll look and see where it stands.
It, it basically would just in your mind, like I said, you hit over here, you hit over here, but the...
Which one's this?
Castleton, Castleton View. It goes from there.
Castleton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where the fire station is.
We'll look at it and see where it is and make sure.
That would be excellent. No, the volunteers got out and did it.
Yeah.
And I, but I was getting phone calls from folks saying, so thank you, but...
We'll, we'll certainly look into it.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for the clearing of the roads, especially... I want to say thank you for the clearing of the roads, especially, I got on the phone after you had cleared the first couple of times the backroads. There were still deering and resettlement and bearwallow were still rough. So I called the regular 800 number and got a gentleman that was, I mean, this was probably seven o'clock at night, as polite as could be. Turns out, he's an engineer who stays and takes some calls, and just happened to be the person I spoke to. He was as nice as he could be, and no offense to Mr. Curry, because he's not here, but engineers don't typically have personalities that really want to be, you know, helpful. But he was like, yeah, I'm staying late, they, they needed me to stick around, so I'm going to be here a little bit longer. He was great. So it's wonderful when you, you meet an employee on the phone like that, that's really very positive.
You said you called on 1-800 number and got there?
I did.
Okay.
And I forget some little area that he was in, and I can't remember what he told me, but he was great. Second thing, I can't, can't believe it didn't make your report, the fact that we're actually going to get a heated camera on Chester Gap at 522. I mean, that is just huge.
I will save that for when we actually get it installed.
I put spring down on my notes, so I'm just excited. We're headed in the right direction on that, and I thank you for your help.
I feel confident it will be, but I'll certainly put it in my report when it is.
Yep. Let me know, let me know when it's going up. I want to get pictures.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. You're welcome. Thank you.
Great year.
Thank you.
All right. It looks like we have Gavain Homes online.
John, if you please unmute yourself. I've just made you the co-host, so you can present your, your presentation.
I can hear somebody.
We can barely hear you. Let's turn it up here. Try, try again. Okay. Try again, please.
How's this?
Hmm.
Better?
A little better. Let's see.
Is it connected?
How's this now?
Uh, we're getting better.
Get it on again?
If we put it towards that.
Let's try it. Try again.
Hello?
Volume's all the way up here. Let's see here.
Can he not hear us?
I think he knows, I'm sorry.
Can you hear us, John?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Maybe just speak up as much as you're comfortable with.
We may be able to do this. Let's try this.
Is that any better?
I think we're getting there.
Okay. I'm John Spain. I'm serving as the project manager for Gavain Homes, and I'm beginning the update this afternoon. Since our last meeting in December, we've revised the plans and developed elevations based on the program that we discussed. So we have two concepts, and each will include two jury-capable courtrooms with deliberation suites and judge chambers, a jury assembly space.
Hey, John.
Both clerks are.
John, let me interrupt you for just a minute. Are you sharing your screen?
Not, not just yet. I can do that now.
Okay. That's why we're not seeing it. Thank you.
No, so they each have, and both the circuit court clerk and combined court clerks are located in the building, and a touchdown space for the Commonwealth attorney and victim witnesses. The Commonwealth attorney's full office will remain. And we presented the elevations and plans to the planning oversight committee in late January of the 21st, and I am going to share them. Let's see. So now you should be able to see the site plan?
Nope, not seeing that.
It's not the tab in back, that green?
No.
No.
Um, let's see. Try again and see. Are you seeing anything now?
No.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the?
I, in my email, I do.
Yeah, I would just share it yourself.
Yeah.
Are you seeing now?
We're not. I'm going to go to my email and pull up the copy that you emailed.
Okay.
Get to that.
I apologize. I'll go ahead and discuss the schedule going forward. So we, we sent our model to Hugo Render, and they are preparing two eye-level renderings for each scheme. And we'll present those also to the planning oversight committee, and we're looking towards the kind of late, late middle of the month. We've also sent the, both concepts to Downey and Scott, our cost estimator for conceptual level cost estimating. The program document has been completed and has been sent to the planning oversight committee for their review. And we've also committed, completed the implementation plan.
Can you ask them to make the copers in there?
Andy Moore was asked if he can be made a code presenter, and he could share the plans.
Your screen is on our screen now. So I'm seeing, we're seeing Concept One, existing courthouse addition.
Yes, okay, great. And just one last thing, we're expecting our final geotechnical report, but they have done three borings for each location, and so far, nothing has come up that said that this would be a problem project. So now, just briefly, Concept One is in addition to the existing courthouse. And this is our, our elevations. The east elevation would be what you would see from the current drive aisle, or it kind of occupies the current drive aisle. The north elevation shows it in relation to the existing courthouse. It's basically a, a brick structure. We're trying to compare apples to apples, so we're using brick for the material, main material for both structures. And we have a, what we call a hyphen piece that accommodates circulation. In the center here, this accommodates the circulation, would be the holding circulation up to the two courtroom levels. And this is Concept Two, which will be the new footprint scheme. We have the site plan, and north is to the left of the site plans, east is to the, to the top, and west to the bottom. And we are looking at the west elevation, which will face the current courthouse green and be the primary entrance. And the south elevation, which will be looking at it in this direction in the plan, if you were able to see without these adjacent buildings. So they're, they're both, plans have, have two courtrooms on the top upper floor, again, so that we can kind of compare apples to apples. What we're doing, getting the cost estimates, that's a more efficient way to handle the holding circulation. And in both schemes, the clerks and public facing functions are on the, on the first floor. And our schedule going forward, we're presenting the renderings to the planning oversight committee on February 18th, and we're making revisions that they would ask for, and we should be ready to present in person to the board supervisors earlier this month, and then on, then to the citizens in early March, incorporating any kind of comments that the board might have. That's my update. Is there any questions or comments?
Thank you for the update, John. This is Van Carney speaking. Our, can you give me a rough square footage of both, one and two?
I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me. I should have had that. Andrew, do you have that available? Is that, are you on film?
Are they, we're talking apples to apples here. They're comparable, though, with each other, right?
Yes. Are they both about 30,000 square feet?
30,000?
Yes.
What? So I think, I think the last time we discussed this, I, that seems, that seems awfully big. Is this, how conceptual is this? How, how far are we along? That's huge.
It's, uh.
That's too big. Not trying to get ahead of myself here, but I think the last time we were talking about this, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but I thought we were talking 20, less, 20,000 max, or trying to sort of scale it down. So 30 is quite an increase here. Now, I don't want to get too far ahead here. We're, we're talking, I'm just going to do knots and bolts here with you. We're talking at least, oh, we're talking 500, 600 square foot, at least. If we get up to 30, 30,000 square feet, we're talking a million point two per month on debt service.
Yeah.
Per year. That's just too much.
And I think.
Maybe more it has to, it could be on me.
I think 20 may have been before the second courtroom as well. I don't know for sure, but I think it was.
But we, we gave up the county attorney, though. You added four, but you took out two.
Right.
So it shouldn't have been that much of a difference.
I don't know what your debt service number was, but I think you said per month. That's not.
Per year, per year, per year.
Yeah.
It's at 15,000, at 15 million, it's about 800,000. So if we get up to, you know, wherever we are, it's going to be up north of 1 million.
I think, I think related to Van's question is, what, what are we going to see when you come here in person? Because I've said before, I'll say it again, I, for something of this importance and magnitude, I really do not, I just, I don't like these remote presentations. I think we deserve in-person presentations. I can't, like, I can't meaningfully engage with the material. I can't ask informed questions. We've got to, we've got to see what we're talking about, and we, we need to.
And I think that was the end of February. Mr. Curry sent out an email.
I appreciate the updates, but, I mean, I can't, I can't pose meaningful questions, or as, as Van suggested, you know, push back on initial planning if we, if there's nothing to grasp here. So I don't know if you can tell us what we're going to see at the end of February? Are we going to get a lot more details?
Yes. At the end of February, we'll be seeing, we'll be presenting plans, full plans, the elevations, and also renderings.
And cost information, right, John?
Yes, and cost information.
And, and just to speak to the program for just a minute, we have been having to go back and forth with the, the planning oversight committee about the size of the building. And, you know, as recently as earlier this month, and in December, we were contemplating, you know, the necessities of having the various components in the courthouse. And the 30,000 square feet is where we arrived at, based on the interactions with the, the end users. So I'm not sure 100% on where the 20,000 came from, what that was built around. It may have been only one courtroom, but we're definitely designing around two courtrooms currently.
Right. Thank you. I just think that the real, the, the reality is, is that we're just, I mean, we're up here sitting, think, we need to think about appropriating. And appropriating means raising taxes. So that's, I'm just going to cut to the chase. So that's what we're.
No, I understand.
And that's what this discussion really revolves around, other than aesthetics, which I think is mainly what the public is engaged on, on a, on a big picture level, is, you know, hey, what is this going to look like? How's it going to sit in the county? But I just don't want to get too far down the road here with a really big building and then have to backpedal a lot, because I, I don't know about you guys, I'm speaking to myself here, but I, I think 30,000 square feet just is too much for rappahannock, and so we're going to need to just figure it out.
Yeah. I mean, we, we did, I think we all came to the conclusion when we last met that we're going to have two courtrooms and in parallel to, to jury deliberation rooms and all of that. But I think to Mr. Carney's point, the overall scale of everything just has to reflect who we are as a community, and, you know, I, it should, it should fit. So, yeah, I, I recall 20,000 square feet was the number, which would put us definitely above, probably in the range of $12 million or something like that, or maybe more, if you do the math right. So, but, yeah, anyway, I think it would be helpful if you come with as much detail, concepts, square footage information, cost information as possible when we see you in person.
Absolutely.
Could you go back to page three, so I can make sure I can understand the sighting of that building, please?
Yes. By the way, can you all see the site plan? Because I cannot see it on my screen.
Yes, Bonnie's scrolling through it for us. She's got it at 30.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So this plan, then, does it envision taking out the old administrative office and any other buildings, or am I misreading this?
There is a, a paint shed that is currently to the, coming to the north of the new addition that would be removed and relocated. And the administration building is the, that's what, here is called the red, the old red building?
Yes, the doll, the doll house.
Yes. You're suggesting relocating that or removing it for this scheme?
Okay. And then the building to the left of the, the proposed site is the church?
The church, yeah.
The church, yes.
Okay, yep. And then, are there any, I know that there's a large tree in the back of the complex. It looks like this plan retains that, that tree as well?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
The other, other one, they interrupted.
What compelled you to site here instead of behind the existing buildings?
We were asked to provide a building that has a good face to the street.
And if I remember correctly, somewhere along the way, maybe in your original presentation, your original pitch, the idea was making the building, or positioning the building in such a way that it was, the front was somewhat flush with the other buildings on Courthouse Road. Do I remember that correctly?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So it's, it sort of fits in, it is aligned with the others.
Could we see the facade of that building again, please?
Yes.
And I just, I wanted to offer notes based on my experience on the building committee. And one of the requests we heard a lot on the building committee, that we heard often, was that the architectural details of the new building include the architectural details in existing buildings on the campus. And, and it's, I guess it's a criticism that I have, that this, this building does not seem to do that. And I offer that constructively in hopes that perhaps it's an opportunity to make adjustments, so it is well received.
You take that? Anyone still need that?
And I think because we had the, the 20,000 square feet in our minds, and we've jumped up to 30, I'm in the process of building a house, and at one point, I had to say, this is how much I'm going to spend. I'm not spending anything more than this, so tell me what I can have. So tell me what I can have for that amount of money. And I would expect that this group is going to get to that point because we know this is tax dollars that we're talking about spending and a large number of them.
But I mean, that was the point Mr. Henry made, and it was a very good point, that you shouldn't go on a spending spree without a budget. And, you know, certainly with a project like this, there will be, in all likelihood, cost overruns, so you should account for that at the outset as well. I think, I was in Fredericksburg recently and viewed the courthouse that y'all did, and I, I think that had about a 15% cost overrun, if I remember correctly.
Yes. So I wanted to just make sure that it was understood that our midterm goal with decision-making is first of all, selecting which concept we're going to proceed with, which is the, either the new construction, entirely new construction, or the addition slash renovation. So that's one decision point. The second is, of course, how big and, and validating the program. So there's a couple of stages along the way. And then, once we have that established, then there are lots of opportunities in the subsequent design phases to refine the design and detailing on the exterior and so forth.
Okay, that sounds good. So do I also kind of hear you saying in that the, the, the size doesn't really, won't affect, you know, if we pick, you know, one or two, you know, we, if we need to bring it down to 18, 20,000 square feet, not a big deal, won't be at that moment where you'll say, well, you really should have picked two because of this, this and that reason, right?
I, the way we've chosen to, or the way we have worked with the county to develop these two options is that they are interchangeable in terms of how they work functionally. In other words, they're the same approximate size in both cases. It's really just a selection of, do we want to integrate in with the courts or not? I think the larger, the largest decision factor perhaps in that selection is how it impacts the current court's operations. Because if you do the addition/renovation version, then you are disrupting the, the court's functions for the, for the duration of construction. If you choose to do the entirely new structure, then there's no need to find swing space and, and disrupt the, the courts.
Okay, well, I mean, I can just, I know that we'll have this discussion moving forward. I think that I am fully into concept, too, and I know we've had this discussion before, but I think that just for many different reasons, I'm, I'm leaning that way. And I know this is not what we're here to decide today. But that's just my, my feeling. And I just wanted to make sure that the si-, that the size was something that we are going to have a longer extended conversation about and that we don't get down to four months from now and we say, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
So I feel good about that, and thank you for doing this work. I appreciate it.
Yeah, glad you do it. And we, I totally sympathize with the sentiment of wanting to be in person, but we have to, to balance the, the cost of the county, of our time coming up there versus the decision points. But we do want to make sure that when we get to the, you know, the final package for you to consider, we will be there in person and, and be able to, you know, be available for whatever discussions are needed.
Hey, to be fair to you, we accepted a contract, and the contract said virtual updates.
With every now and then in-person mixed in.
Exactly.
And with February 20th...
February 24th, I believe it is.
We should probably get that on the calendar.
I'm really, really glad that you're, when you guys drove back there and took samples, that, you know, we, you guys didn't find bedrock three feet below the surface. That's, that's heartening.
Yep.
We are as well. We are as well. Any other questions for us?
I think we're good. We're looking at the date to try to make sure everybody can be here.
Okay.
Thanks.
But thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll sign off then.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for being here.
Bye-bye.
Is that a 6 o'clock meeting, presumably?
I think it is. I can't find the email.
Trying to remember how many it was, the 24th.
He put it at the bottom of an email.
Okay.
Okay. Well, while we're looking for that number, if you guys are okay, I'm going to go ahead and move into public comment.
That's great.
All right. At this time, anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your district. And I'm going to start back here. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Michelle.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
She knew quite well, she fought side.
Are we ready? Okay. I'm just going to hand this.
Watch your release.
I was wondering if we were going to get one this year.
Thank you.
Xie xie ni, xin ye kuai le.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. You're the snake.
Thank you.
Oh, you got, you put the stamp on it. I hadn't heard about these stamps.
Thank you.
Very cool.
This is awesome. I have mine on the wall.
It's very cool.
I do, I like them, thank you.
That's a beautiful stamp.
Anyway, just if you would look at this in terms of our county and reflection, transformation and wisdom. It's also growth, but not the wrong kind, and flexibility. So if you could, you know, we're, we're skin shedding now, renewal, letting all the old stuff, just let it go and activate our life force, which here would be, we got to, you know, go a little more back to the roots, if you will. It just sometimes feels like we're losing it, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the recruit, Susan Babcock from the Hampton District.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yes, I love these. All right, yep.
Go for it, Hampton District. This is Anita Ramos, Hampton District. A couple of quick things. First of all, the, the signs at Benvenue are the big divided highway signs. And it startles me every time I see them, which is good. Not that I rush out in traffic or go the wrong way, but I'll tell you, the first day they were there that I saw them, it was like, oh my gosh, they did something. So I, I hope it's working and not just with me. The other thing is, you're coming up this, this afternoon to look at the general assembly bills. I used to follow the general assembly as part of my job years and years ago when it wasn't on the internet. And it's fascinating to know what goes on down there, and it's terribly important to know. And I'm glad that you have a little insight as to what's going on right now. And I hope that continues this year and the years to come. And last of all, looking at the conceptual plans that we just saw, until you see the square footage of everything, and I mean by room, we're not going to truly understand 30,000 square feet versus 20,000 square feet versus anything. It's a very, very pretty picture. It looks like the windows are very tall, and maybe they don't have to be so tall and the rooms don't have to be so gargantuan, because that seems to be the big thing these days, to build rooms that are, you know, a zillion feet tall. So those are the kind of things we really need to see. I was, I was disappointed in what we got today, truthfully. And I think they're a good company, et cetera, but I was looking to see all the things that we talked, that you all talked about. And we don't see it yet. And why not? It's, that was December, good heavens. And I think that's, that's about it for me right now, and happy new year, too.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Lucila Gressender, Hampton District. First, I'll make a little comment on the courthouse. I think Christine was correct in asking to show again the layout of how this building would go. Because as that presentation continued, all you saw was what I'm perceiving as the side of the building, which looked gargantuan and huge. And I think if they're trying to go with what the board or what the people have asked for with the two courthouses and everything, until you actually see the interior of how that's laid out, you're not going to be able to really tell how to start possibly taking away some of the square footage or something. I think if they had done the initial presentation a little bit better with what the front of the building was going to look like, to put in perspective how it's going to actually go back, so you're not going to be seeing that. Because that thing is like, it's going to scare people right away. Because that was the initial reaction I heard from you all. I used to be in builders, advertising and all that kind of stuff, and it was like, no, let's not do that. Anyway, okay, let's go on to something else. Very, very briefly, you know I like books. I came upon this really neat book called The Disengaged Teen. Okay? And it's talking about how kids in high school are disengaging from their education. But the thing of it is, adults are disengaging a lot of times as well. So I think this is just as pertinent to us as adults trying to navigate our way through our, our life, if you will. However, what I also wanted to do was give a shout out to our local Rappahannock News. I went to the Fourth Estate meeting last week, and it was very interesting because a lady who I'd never seen before brought up the, the fact that she'd read the story about the library. And so this is so cool because our local newspaper is just such a wealth of information everywhere in our community. And it's, the, the circulation that it has, so it really penetrates a lot of our community. And so it's a good way to get information out and lead to really good conversations as we've had people who've read stories before and you've heard a whole uproar. But it got people engaged in, in talking about things. So I just, I just want, now, full disclosure, I used to be in Foothills Forum. I'm not there anymore. I was a newspaper person, I think from birth. I did my own, created my own school newspaper when I was in elementary school. So it's like in my blood. So I just want to say, the interesting thing is on our social media, we have a few naysayers who give the newspaper a nasty name, but it shows that they too read the newspaper. So we, we have a broad audience, and I just want to commend them for the job they do and hope you all appreciate them as much as I do.
Thanks, Sheila.
Thank you.
Sort of not really prepared, but Laura Grigsby, Hampton District. I've been attending the board meetings since last fall. I didn't make the January one because I was in snow jail, living on the road that I live on. And because of that, the thing that I think I want to share at this moment is, this has been a huge learning process for me. And having been a commuter for the entire time that I lived either part-time or when we moved here full-time in 1995, it has been, I haven't had the time to be able to do this. And quite frankly, it is eye-opening. I've invited a lot of my friends and neighbors in the area that I'm getting to know to attend these meetings with me because this is our money that's being spent. And quite frankly, when I saw the renderings of the courthouse, I'm going, why do we need this much space? And I know that you guys have to deal with a whole lot of different issues, and I'm learning about those things. I bite my tongue, I write notes, and Kira will probably get emails later on. But there are some things that totally puzzle me, and the broadband thing is, is one of them at this point. And us not retracting ourselves and offering grants to people that are willing to apply for $1,000, and you can put in whatever you want. So there are things that I don't have the answers for, and I'm just exploring and investigating them myself. But I think that the only way that you're going to be able to really understand what the individual peoples, people in the community want is if they get their butts in here and start participating.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We've got one person on Zoom not sure if they're there to speak or not. All right, not seeing a Zoom hand, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Are we there?
We are there.
Hold second, a motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, going into new commercial activity and related matters.
Madam Chairman, if, if it's okay, I see Ms. Summers is in attendance, likely for the Planning Commission agenda item. Could we address that now?
We can, and I just figured this part would go pretty quickly.
Oh, okay.
Are you, you're good? Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Kira?
Sure, everyone might have read that the Inglewood Washington has changed its expansion plan. It's now going to be a spa slash pool. That'll be roughly where the employee parking is behind Skippy's old store, which became the health department. So I think, at least for now, it's probably good news from a, from a traffic disruption standpoint. But obviously, it now sounds like that all that work is going to commence soon. So I think we'll all have to make an effort to stay on top of making sure that the town still flows. And one thing I regret that I forgot to ask Mr. Nuzvid is I do want, I do want permanent solar speed reduction signs, both at the entrance on Warren Avenue into town. And then currently, there's a temporary battery activated one down by Paul and Cookie's gas station that I want replaced with a permanent one. So whatever we need to do to compel VDA to, to give the land use permits to allow for those, I go into all your districts, I'm envious of the nice signs that you have. I'm not sure why we don't have them on either end of our county seat, which seems crazy. So I'm going to ask for those again, and I expect that to be done. But that's all I have. Thank you.
My only concern about the spa really goes back to water, and I've talked about that before. I really hope that strong analysis is being done that pools and spas use a lot of water.
Yeah, and I, I think that, obviously, the town has its own wastewater treatment facility and water system. So assuming the town well, the backup well, and the reservoir are all functioning well, hopefully, hopefully everyone involved will, will analyze kind of what the demand is going to be and make sure that it'll work. But yeah, you raise a good point.
All right, broadband project update. Ms. Smith has asked for this one on the agenda.
I did ask for this on the agenda. There were a few action items that we, I think, I think we all agreed on, or at least we discussed at the end of the joint meeting, at which the All Points Broadband representative was also in attendance. One is the photos or other renderings for, to set expectations for what the ground installation will look like. will look like, as opposed to the line, telecom line installation. And I, I don't know if anyone on the board or administration has received an update on that, but we do need that information. And if I need to make a motion, I, I will do that.
Yeah, I appreciate you raising that, because I think, I mean, let's cut to the chase, where as you go down, like into Fauquier County, Culpeper County, you can see, like, all those orange and white.
Chicanes or whatever.
Is that what they're called?
I think they're called chicanes or utility marker lines.
And so obviously.
And we have them along 522 and stuff, because of Verizon and all those guys, yep.
So I just, I, I don't want, I don't want that to fall off the radar, that we did bring that up and, and do expect that. And then the, the other thing was the answer from the folks at All Points about our, our treatment in, in relation to other counties. And I know we were given the answer that those are county-by-county projects and not larger area projects, or run through a, a planning district like our project is. But I do think we should not give up on securing a discount for the people of Rappahannock County, especially if there's a pivot being made toward bead funding, where it will be five to six years, possibly more, before rollout is complete, that we should be able to secure discount prices.
Yeah, and that, that, I think we made clear in the discussion that those expanded areas that would, would drag that timeline out are above and beyond what was already part of the Vatti project, which they've committed to completing by the end of, I think, end of 2026.
And we made sure to ask that that wasn't going to get shifted around.
Right.
Now, that was, that was what they said.
Yep.
And we'll hold them to that.
I guess that takes me to the next point that I wanted to bring up, which is that I, I believe it would be helpful for staff to request a copy of the addendum that Culpeper County was able to secure, and review that to concede, to see what points may be helpful and, and beneficial for the people of Rappahannock County. Sounds like they were able to build in timeline assurances that, that we don't currently have in our contract. So I would, I, I'm willing to make a motion that we instruct staff to contact Culpeper County, their peers in Culpeper County, for the copy of the addendum. They were able to conclude with All Points Broadband, and for county staff and the county attorney to review options that might benefit the people of Rappahannock County or the wider multi-county effort.
Yeah, I'll second that, noting your, the addition of, the reference to the fact we're part of this county, or this multi-county project.
If I motion second, any discussion? I would think that would be available on board doctrine.
I think it probably is widely. I just think opening a line of discussion between Culpeper County and our county would be very beneficial.
We talk every Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission meeting with all the counties that are there, and that's always on the agenda.
I understand that. I think just in light of the experience that other counties are facing, something to get it on the record and to set expectations would be very helpful.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, he's up, so he said that he would look into it, and I think it's as easy as getting that document, looking at it. We all look at it and say, yep, this is what we want, send it to them, and say, this is what we want.
Right.
So it's, we just, we just tell them what we want to do.
Yep.
Yeah, and I wonder, I wonder if anyone from the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission has raised the same idea. It would be helpful if we could be working from two directions, where we're not on our own as a single locality within that group driving this idea.
I think it would be beneficial to send the document to Brandon, and just copy in the other seven counties and say, why aren't we doing the same?
Well, then, I guess I'll, I'll amend my motion to include and distributing that document to the leadership of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission and other parties within our agreement.
Okay, yeah.
You're okay with that amendment? All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The last item on this update that I would, I would like to talk about, and I expect this is probably where I'm going to lose some people. I do think that we are in a risky agreement. I mean, the gentleman from Broad, from All Points Broadband said the reason that they're, they're switching to bead funding is because our program has been deemed to be at risk. That is the reason why they're pursuing this additional funding. And I do think it would be beneficial not to act on, but to research as a county, what happens if we withdraw from the agreement, or what happens if the agreement falls apart? And to that end, what liabilities may exist for the counties that contributed to the effort? What we, we may be facing on those fronts as well? Because as we all know, this is a very complex endeavor. There's a lot of moving parts. I mean, I, I've been hit with new bits of information that affect my, my view on the project, probably three different occasions since two weeks ago. You know, there was a federal freeze, maybe now they're not frozen, now we're in a holding pattern. And I have to say, if I had seen the article from our peers in Culpeper before our bead vote the other week, I probably would not have voted to support them pursuing that bead funding for us. So it's a fluid situation, and I think we need to be aware of all the eventualities and impacts to Rappahannock County.
And I, I appreciate you raising that, and I think it's important, maybe to even, because I was thinking about this after our last somewhat unsatisfactory meeting. And so from a fiscal perspective, this would be my more narrow question. From a fiscal perspective, in terms of, of county ARPA funds, I believe, including the school, we're at about just shy of $1.4 million. And that money's in escrow with the, with the fiscal agent, which is the regional commission. And I understand that that money has been earning interest while it's been deposited there. So I think, to put a finer point on it, I would like to know what, I guess, related to your broader question, if we were to pull out, how would we get that, would, when would we get that money back? And would we be able to retain the interest earned on that money? Because there's time value money, and that's nearly $1.4 million in, in federal COVID relief money that had come to the county and then to the school in part, that we parked for this project. Thankfully, no local, local taxpayer dollars, but rather, this was all federal money that had been granted to us in the context of COVID relief. So I would like to know if that sits in escrow for the duration of the project, and let's say the project doesn't go forward, and we, we recover that money? Because that money was somewhat restricted from a, from a ARPA federal granting perspective, if and when we were to get that money back with interest, what, what, if any restrictions would remain on that money? And that's, I think that, for me, is the bottom line. It's like, what, what do we, what do we have extended out there? What we have is federal, basically federal money that was given to us as part of the pandemic, which we, we, which we paid into this 5 million, 5, 5.9 million dollar project. So if we get that money back, will we get the interest that was earned when interest rates were quite favorable? And number two, would it be returned to us wholly unrestricted? And, and could we reinvest it in anything we wanted? You know, including maybe the courthouse or something? Obviously, we're kind of in this position where, from a broadband perspective, we really haven't had any other options. So we went this route, but if, if this company is not going to come through in the end, then I agree with Ms. Smith, we need to evaluate how we get out. And, you know, we may be in a situation where we're back to square one, and in the meantime, people who can will get Starlink. I hope we don't get to that point, because to this, I mean, as recently as this morning, I'm, I'm dealing with Bright Speed landline outages. And Bright, even Bright Speed tells me that the only way they're ever going to provide reliable phone service is if fiber comes to the county, so.
So can I ask a real quick question? Do you guys want, we need legal advice. So do you, is this something we want to talk to Art about? Is this something that we need to engage somebody else? How, I, I hear what you guys are saying, is we need to read the contract, figure out what our options are.
Just what, what, what would, what would our exit be?
What I'm asking is that, are we making a motion to direct legal, to engage? What do you want to do?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions. I, I don't want to bring on special counsel. That didn't really seem like it bought us much. In the end, I thought the best legal advice we got on the broadband project was actually from Mr. Curry. And I think he may be the person that is best positioned. He and Art in concert could, could work through that scenario. And I think it's important to know, and I think it's important for All Points Broadband to know, we're talking about this.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we don't have faith in them, and we see what's going on around them. And I don't mean to put words in everybody's mouth. Maybe you all have faith in them. I think the excellent word that Ms. Cromer used during our last meeting was skeptical. We have a healthy skepticism in light of current events, and we need some assurances, financial assurances, that we're looking out for. It might be federal money, but local and, and federal monies.
Yeah, I, I'm with you. I think it's a matter of just asking county, county administrator in conjunction with the county attorney to confer with the regional commission on what our exit would look like, and how we could, how we could affect that if we, if we decide to go that route. And what, what if any implications there would be for our, the recovery of our $1.4 million in COVID relief money that we invested in this project?
Well, I think that's a great motion, and I'm going to second it while I have the opportunity.
Do you have that motion?
I do not.
I didn't think so.
That's what these are for.
Yep.
We're recording it three times, so.
Do you want to repeat that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I, I think the motion is simple. We just ask the county administrator in conjunction with the county attorney, and to the extent necessary, representatives from the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission to outline for us in basic terms what, what the implications would be fiscal and otherwise, if Rappahannock County chose to withdraw from this regional agreement, and try to look at other options. And it's, I, yeah, that's my motion, and.
And I would say that I, the only, the only thing that I would request would be that you amend your motion to say, in the event that, that the relationship should naturally dissolve for lack of funding opportunities, or we should choose to withdraw.
That's fine. I'll amend. Yeah, I mean, I, I think I said that, if, if we, if we decided some future day to just sever a relationship and withdraw from the agreement. And I want to be clear, okay, that's my motion, and then I know we'll have discussion.
And I'm, I'm seconding it, and I know.
Now we can do a discussion.
Yeah, so I want to be clear that at the last meeting, on the Vatti, on, on the Vatti part of the project, Mr. Carney and I asked very directly when they would be done with that. And I forgot what the road, the, the total miles were, but the 10 to 20 miles per month that they're committing to that are construction supposed to commence in the third quarter of this year, they believe they can get the Vatti part of the project done, which is not the, not the additional bead, bead project area for people who might have Comcast or might face like Comcast construction fees or et cetera. We're talking about the core people in Rappahannock County who, who basically have no options. So Mr. Carney and I held them to a commitment that they would be done by the end of 2026. Period. Hard stop. End of story. So in light of my motion, which borrowed from Ms. Smith's excellent comments, I would say that if, if we don't see All Points Broadband trucks rolling through our county, or their contractors rolling through our county by the end of the summer, then this initial discussion should take on more urgency, because then we really have to ask ourselves whether they're going to get it done. And Mr. Carney asked that of Mr. Ennis quite directly. What does that look like, I think was your phrasing? What is this going to look like? And they believe that if they finally get going on construction, which is now mostly subterranean, in the early third quarter of 2025, they can finish the miles they've committed to for the core Vatti project, which are the people I was talking to this morning, who don't have phone service, or can't get Starlink, and I want those people to have this. So I want to be clear that this is not a, a bailing out, torpedoing or anything, but I agree that we have to be reasonable, given all the doubts that we all have about their ability to get this done. So I applaud Ms. Smith for her comments in this regard.
Thank you.
So I think in terms of due diligence, and I've talked to some of you individually about this, that we have, we should know our legal exit plan. Like anytime you just get into an agreement, you should just know that, whether you're in honeymoon phase or not. I think that this project is needed in this county, and let's not forget where we were a couple of years ago, which is that Bright Speed, Century Link, Starlink, these are technologies that do not have the stability of fiber optic. These were the only people who came to us and said, we'll do it. And we engaged with them. We have $1.4 million of ARPA money into this, and we've had generous support from outside folks who have decided that they wanted to help us to get this done. I have, from the beginning, thought that there was no way that this project would ever be on time, because it is a government project. And I have never seen a government project go on time. I rarely see private projects go on time. Our job is to stay on top of it, and I feel like our job is doing our due diligence to know what we need to do and when we need to do it. So I fully support that. On another note, I do think that fiber in this county would be hugely impactful to all the citizens.
Yeah.
And when the school did the survey, 98% said, please, 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 let's do this. So I just want to keep that on the radar.
Yeah.
If this isn't going to work out, we need to do some fancy footwork and figure that out. And we need to know what our options are to do that.
Well.
I, I, I just wanted to say that I was, I was actually quite encouraged when Mr. Ennis came in and talked to us, and I kind of nailed it down on this bead stuff. The bead stuff has nothing to do with the Vatti stuff. So the federal freeze has nothing to do with the money that has already been allocated, but I'm not naive. This is government work. I get it. As Mr. Anderson pointed out last month, this is a, basically a grant.
Yeah.
It's not a contract. We're not buying anything. We're not purchasing an asset. We're giving money to this third party, and they're going to come in and do a service for us. And what do we get after that? We have the infrastructure that will be hard. It's not satellite, which is a really big, important thing, I think. And it will be a subsidized rate. That's the thing that's the most critical, will be a subsidized rate for people. If this really looks like it's not going to get done, I do think, like all projects that we engage with, we have to have some kind of awareness of when we need to start moving. And I do agree that we don't even know how to do that if we don't know what our options are.
Yeah.
So I agree.
Well, and I, I think, to me, the, the light comes on with the early, the early installation rollout, while they were going to do it more once now they'll have a phased rollout. Let's face it, the reality is, they're starting earlier so they can get invoices out earlier. They're clearly having money problems. And we haven't really talked about even the permitting and what that's, the right-of-way issues. And that sounds like a huge hang-up in Culpeper County. I wonder what that'll look up, look like for us, and is there any way to anticipate that issue and get ahead of it? And I, I know you brought that up in general during the last joint meeting, Madam Chairman, but I, I don't want to, I want to learn from the mistakes that are going on next door. I don't want to have the same pain.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much what I was saying, and it sounded like for Mr. Nesbit, when they finally got the right people together, Culpeper started, you know, moving forward. I mean, I want fiber. I don't want another product. Satellite sounds great right now, but you have no idea what's going to happen with satellite. I still believe if every county in this state is going to have fiber, we should not settle for less. Having a plan, totally agree. The whole eastern shore was as angry as we are today, until the first fiber started connecting to the houses, and then everybody's fine. And it's just a shame that it's so behind. It's also a shame that they have 22 counties to be behind with. But I think Loudon said that the work they're doing is good work, and, I mean, it's just, it's, if we weren't behind, people would be fine. It's just that it's taking so long.
Mr. Goff, is there anything you need from us to, to, to sort of give us some legal advice on what it is we should think?
No, I, I was thinking back to my review of all that, and it seems to me that there are proportions of the agreement that do speak to withdrawal and the consequences of it. I don't think it's going to be a hard, a heavy job to be able to come back to you relatively quickly with this, or these are your options legally. Relatively quickly with this are, these are your options legally. I don't think it's going to be that tough.
Yeah, I think I think for me, it's. Not to beat a dead horse, but if we don't, if we don't see construction actually commencing when Mr. Ennis specifically told us it would. Which is like September.
Yeah.
If we don't, if we don't see something happening, then I think we've got to.
Yeah.
Ask real questions because with the ten to twenty miles per month. And I forgot what the total miles were.
The math is.
The math is such that they're going to have to hit the higher end of that beginning in September through. The third quarter of twenty twenty six to get it done. So then it becomes a question of, well, what are you doing? I mean, it doesn't, the math, the math no longer works.
I will point out just because I'm a property owner in another county that. And in Westmoreland, uh, I see a lot of All Points trucks out and they're, they're moving forward rather quickly in the northern end.
Right.
So whether they're, I know they're in a different regional commission, but at the same time, I do see All All Points trucks. So I I was encouraged when I saw that, you know, thinking that sooner rather than later, they'd be up here.
Have you, have you been or your mom been serviced by them? Have you worked with them down there or?
No, not yet. No, no, when they, when it comes into our development, I'm sure we will.
Okay.
And so we own it now, not my mom, so you know, my my wife is anxious to get fiber, right?
Yeah, I bet. So I'm hearing kind of two parallel um, conversations and um. And keeping in mind the year of the wood snake and renewal and activation of our life force. Um, as as we're going to get a copy of the deal Culpeper had and we're going to share it with the other members in this deal. I'm kind of feeling like, why aren't we getting some of their help to be louder? So if you think about the, some of the other boards. I've I've spoken to members of both the board um, in Falkir and in Page. And I think they have so many other projects that might. This project might not be, I don't want to say it's not as important to them, but it might not be the big project. Those counties are working on.
Point.
So it, as we're doing all of this, I absolutely agree. We need to know our exit plan. We need to know all if there needs to be an exit plan. We need to know all the consequences. All of the information to make good decisions, but also we should probably leverage some of our um. Networks in the other counties to to raise the level of awareness because. Yeah, twenty two counties and then eight, if eight say, hey, we give up, we give up, we're going to go somewhere else, then. We just don't know what would happen. Um, so I think as we send. This deal, I mean, this um, the copy of the Culpeper addendum and whatnot, we make that um. Contact, we also have real frank conversations with our counterparts in the in the counties in this deal.
I think a way we could do that is is that once we pull this Culpeper thing, we get our options, we put together a package of what it is we want to do. And tell the other guys, hey, this is what we're doing. Why don't you get on board? Like this is, this makes eminent sense because of this, this, and this reason. And if we don't, we just have some benchmarks and so if we don't see blah blah, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, and we have.
And if we can hand it to them and say, see, then I think people, I I I think that's better just to kind of lead the way and say, this is what we're going to do.
What is?
I just want to be very clear though, that I stand behind this project in the sense that I want this to work, whether it will work or not. That's the thing that we need to stay on top of.
Yeah, and we didn't have a, there weren't many other, whatever the metaphor was at the time.
No dance partners.
Yeah.
Dance partners.
Dance partners, right.
I mean, I think uh, Mr. Carney said it earlier and and I believe it with my whole heart. Our, our job is to, to watch this. Our job is to stay on top of it.
Yeah.
And um, you know.
All right, I have a motion, a second. We have not voted yet. I'm going to go ahead and, you know, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Great discussion.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
All right, state forest Siri behave. State for sustainability.
Is this money for us?
Yes, sir. This is money. Um, the county administration was recently notified um, by the state that we would receive for fiscal twenty five. It's fifty six thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars.
Great.
Um, this is not recurring funds. The county has received this one once before and that was in fiscal twenty three. Um, no guarantee that this will be in every year's state budget. Um, the reason I wanted this to be on the agenda is because obviously we're about ready to start the fiscal twenty six budget process. The um, limitations of this funding is that it is to be used solely for public education. For projects related to outdoor recreation or for forest conservation.
Could be, would you like us to vote to accept these monies and direct them to the RCRFA?
If the, if that is the board's desire, then yes, I would, I would need that as a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
It absolutely. I was, I had my pitch ready. But.
You got beat to the.
Yes. Other people, other people or just?
I I just want that playground. I want some things done.
I'm glad to see we are all one here.
Yeah, right.
All right, we have a a motion and a second.
Let's vote.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. As as having been the representative for the past three years on that board, I just want to say, Donna and I talked about this and I know she was passionate about it and you were on there before me.
Several times.
Deferred maintenance is a kind word and that it's just, yes, there's a lot that needs to happen.
Thank you. All right, GA bills.
So Mr. Curry's been tracking these and has put together, and this is the latest information as of Friday. How this changed over the weekend. Um, we don't have that update at this point. Is there anything here in particular that anyone would like to go through?
Not go through, it's still solar that I am on high alert for. Being told what to do with our land.
You know, it's really tough um, to track all these bills and they change so frequently. That's the challenge. By the time. You answer um, on something, it it's, there's a very good chance it will have morphed into something else. And and when I was thinking of this agenda item, I wondered if it would be. If it would be helpful more to address a friendly letter to um, our representatives and just say, we know you know. But we strongly uh, oppose anything at the Commonwealth level that undermines our local authority. Particularly on matters of zoning.
Yep, instead of the one-off vacant requests to send a general.
And and if it helps to to lump in ADUs, solar, uh, data centers, enumerate those items. But really, anything that undermines our local zoning authority, we oppose it.
Yep.
You know, interestingly, I I agree with you, but I think it's really hard to know because some localities and under, so like we're a Dillon state, right?
Right.
So so some counties could view some legislation as undermining, whereas we, because we're anti-development, could see it as positive.
Good point.
So like ADUs by right, some folks would say, yes.
Well, I guess.
And some folks would say, or an industrial base thing where we have almost no industrial base, some people would say, oh, so. While I do totally agree with that sentiment, I'm not sure that we, what if we get lumped in with something that we're like, whoa, 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 that's, that's not what we meant.
I guess the way to frame it would be to say that, uh, to borrow the turn of phrase from our comp plan. That we are in a comparably different county and we pride ourselves on our rural and agricultural. The priorities and and uh, with that in mind, we oppose any measures that would undermine our local authority. I mean, you do have to frame it. I can see, I can see what you're saying.
Preserve, preserve our scenic and rural identity, something like that.
I mean, they know, they know what we want already. They do. They really do. I mean, our people do. It's just everybody else that's a problem.
Right, right. Yeah, I sent a couple of emails and I went, I know you're already going to vote this way, but.
But I mean, still, I think back to um, I'm trying to remember his name, the the Roanoke City. Delegate. Rasul who, you know, complained that our taxes are lower than almost anyone else's and. Therefore, how dare we ask for state funding for our school system? I'm like. Hey, man, it benefits, it benefits everyone in the Commonwealth to have a place like Rappahannock County.
Everybody's going to be sorely disappointed when everything's overgrown and data center wide and they don't have a Rappahannock County. Going to want Rappahannock to stay this way. Anything else that you want to talk through? I think I heard there were like three hundred and fifty bills they were looking at today and I think tomorrow's crossover, so. Everything could change by Wednesday.
Yeah, well, I I would say if anything comes along in that, in that vein, I, and the chair feels like we need to act swiftly, I would empower you to do so.
Okay. I think I need a vote on that one if you want.
I think, I think that's my motion.
I think I'll second it.
All right, got that?
I do.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, now, planning commission prioritization. Thank you for hanging out.
It looks like progress.
Did you, did you want to talk about it, Michelle? You've been waiting all this time.
Not really.
Um, at the last planning commission, it was brought up that these were items that had been referred to the planning commission and uh. We wondered if they were still of importance and uh, if there was a priority um, that we should assign to them in taking them up.
So what's your, the non, so family subversions?
Family, yes, temporary structures, events structured by nonprofits. And professional offices, I believe, are the items that were left. It's my, it's my recollection that professional offices have sort of gone away. And Ms. Summers, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall that people are still requesting those or requesting a change.
Come on up.
That was initiated by a citizen as a um, tax amendment, but since then, um, it has, it's kind of dropped off.
What's the context? I mean, what is, what?
It was, it was for um, uh, office in the highway, uh, commercial zoning on two eleven was what initiated it and there was. I thought that there, that might be a way to use um, some structures in that area. But it never, um, nothing ever came to fruition and um, the citizen hasn't pursued it probably in two years.
Every bit of two years, not longer.
So it'd be a different, it'd be a different zoning district?
It's not allowed by right currently in the highway commercials.
You know, you know where it is, the longest area of.
Yeah.
Like across from the bridge, across from that that commercial area. But you can't, you can't be a dentist there.
That's correct.
You can't be a lawyer there.
It can be a restaurant or it can be a, um, a shop.
Fruit stand.
Yes.
Okay.
So um, that was just a question of that was still important. Family subdivision, I have to say, I I um, think I was the one that brought that forward. I I interest in that has fallen off. I haven't heard anything about that in quite some time. Uh, temporary structures. I believe that's been reconciled through the changing of the property. And then events by nonprofit entities, some of those events that we were concerned about were never repeated again, so um. Or one in particular that I was concerned about was never repeated again.
The one, the one that's kind of, that has been batted around a lot is the very last one in the list.
Yes.
Which is the um, sort of somehow. And this is the public safety, as I recall, was like, how do you? How do you quantify vehicles or visitors to a, an event so that it's safe? So you have ingress and egress and all of that. Um, and the public safety body on which Debbie and I said, we, we batted around and then. I think you all recall that people are like, well, what if we have a family reunion, you know, it's a.
Wedding.
It's a tough one to quantify, but let's face it. I mean, I think the reason we are going after this is because we have had some bad actors who are using. You know, farm winery, the cover of a farm winery or an agritourism business to have a uh, you know, to have a. A five K run or a, a oyster in whatever festival with food trucks and. And that's, this, if I remember correctly, we were trying to push back on. From a local ordinance perspective on the abuse of the agritourism, farm winery, farm brewery cover.
Yep.
And I wouldn't, I I would like to not lose track of that.
Of that one, okay.
Um, but I'm, that, it was with us. Um, I guess from a public safety perspective, we got bogged down kind of in the same way that you all had.
Well, and I think the, the reason that it was referred to the planning commission is because it is in. The zoning ordinance that basically nonprofits can have any number of events, any number of places, any time, pretty much. Um, and that was the intention there, I believe, was originally for the fire and rescue companies. Um, you know, to have a partnership with them, but is it, is it maybe uh. A good idea to constrain that further than it is currently?
Does it not say in the um, in the ordinance principally funded nonprofits or is it just nonprofits? Principally funded public nonprofits?
Just nonprofits.
I was going to say, I think it's very plainspoken.
We could just change it, couldn't we?
So if you could produce a five oh one.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, I mean, you're.
But to Ms. Smith's point, like if we're trying to carve it out for them, we could say principally funded by the public five oh one C threes. And then that would carve them out.
Then I guess the question is, is that a, is that a viable legal leg to stand on? That if you're, if you're working with us, it's allowed and if you're not working with us, it's not allowed.
Can we do that, Art?
Uh, I don't know is the answer. Uh, you're just trying to say. And you're talking about the, the public safety ingress and egress plan for an event. And you're going to make it only apply to one legal entity and not another. Then how is?
Right, yeah, that was Mark.
Further the goal of public safety? If some are allowed to have an unsafe event because of their status. And others are not allowed to have an unsafe uh, public safety event, you know, or event. I don't know that that stands to reason, but I would have to look a little closer.
Would it stand to reason because they're already on site?
Uh, because they're fire departments?
Yeah.
If, if, well, I think the easy thing to say there is just say fire partner. Or rescue squad. Just say what you mean.
Okay.
Instead of couching it in obscure language, uh, just say that fire departments and rescue squads are hereby exempt. Because they are on scene. That makes sense.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can continue to work on that. It was just a, a request by. Uh, others on the planning commission for us to update and prioritize, so.
Yeah.
It sounds like we'll work on that event sponsored by nonprofit entities item. And um, once we have that concluded, we will, we will gladly bring it back to you all for um, the next item that you would like to see us address.
And does that relate, I mean, is that dovetail at all with the um, the vehicle access to events?
I think vehicle access to events is more of a public safety issue and this is more, what is a reasonable cap? Um, or tolerance that neighbors should have to anticipate. Could happen on an adjoining property or adjacent property that. Because somebody could say, oh, we're going to do this and we're going to donate all the money to a nonprofit, so we can do what we want.
So on vehicle access to events, is that still with us at, at the public safety body?
I would think so.
We referred it to the PSC, yeah.
Well, right, that's.
I think we got hung up with like Red Oak Mountain and those kind of events.
And and.
And so maybe, maybe we're going to get to a point where we just can't do it.
And the hunt, I think, was the other thing, you know, it's stor- historic.
Are permits required in any way? If you're going to have a large event?
So for instance, the fireworks, the Fourth of July fireworks, they get a permit and they don't pay for it.
Right.
Um, but they do obtain a permit. Um, I, and I think the. When this initially started is any of your nonprofits, whether it be the fire station, the rescue squad, it's very fast.
Rats cats.
You know, there's all these different events. Say, one particular property has used all the time for all these events for nonprofits. So do we want to put a cap on that or not?
I'm not, I'm not sure I want a cap, but if we could require everyone to give us a heads up that the event is occurring. And what the typical size of that event is, then emergency services, sorry. Could be prepared for that particular event where I'm not sure we always know at this time.
And that could be something that would, could be added in to our process is making sure that those different agencies get notified. So we can prepare ahead of time.
Right.
So, may I suggest something?
Yes, come on up, speaking of emergency services.
Um, it may be possible to look at this from a scalability perspective, both in size and frequency of an event. So you could require permitting once they reach or exceed a certain number of people or a certain frequency of a number of times annually. And then regarding the fire services, just look at make a requirement, that threshold would hit a requirement for a site safety plan. So if the fire department has to make a site safety plan for their own event, it's quite simple. But it'd be a little more cumbersome for somebody from the public. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Dan.
I think that from where I'm kind of sitting, like, I think to try and fix this because of a bad actor kind of just seems like a lot of government regulation to me that I just don't know that I want to get into. Apropos the planning commission, I saw the emails, you guys are doing the comp plan this year.
We will start on the comp plan, yeah.
Which is gonna be, I don't know how you're feeling about it, I don't know if you're feeling like, whoa, this is gonna be. Because I saw that you guys are gonna do some town halls and you're gonna go around to each district.
Yeah.
And in my mind, that's gonna be, it'll be a lot of work.
Well, this will probably fit in around that.
Yeah, but I think that maybe you guys could get some feedback about that. But I do think that, I don't know, I just, I think if we have like an acute issue where it's like a real safety issue, then I I'm open to hearing about that, but I don't know. I just I do think we run into some problems with trying to just squash this into a, hey, we have an issue there. And so we should regulate here. I'm like, that's just my feeling.
Well, and I do think it's different, too. If you are the property owner and you're having on site at your own property an event, that's one thing. But then there's also properties that attract these kind of events. And it's not the property owner having the event, it's nonprofit coming in doing an event, another nonprofit coming in doing an event.
But if 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 I, let's say I own a, just hypothetical, let's say I own a winery that doesn't produce wine, doesn't grow grapes.
I think we've heard this.
That's at the end of a two lane road. And I also have a frisbee golf course and claim other agritourism exemptions. Just imagine something like that. With those property owners who are operating various and sundry loosely agricultural related things, activities, engaging those activities, do they need to go to you for an event permit or are they just completely off the books?
Most of them are completely off the books.
That's where that's where I'm coming from. I mean, that getting back to brass tacks, that's where I feel like we're vulnerable.
And that's, I mean, it kind of goes with what I'm talking about if we know that there's gonna be a large event anywhere. If we could find out ahead of time to allow the people that may have to be there a heads up that it's coming. And we know when the ducks are gonna fly or not fly, float.
Maybe one day they will, or another you're just floating.
Those are the pigs, right?
That would be quite something.
But somehow notifying fire, I I just think emergency services should be notified if there's any large gathering that's expected. So that we can make sure ALS fourteen or the chase buggy and different companies are prepared to roll if something should happen.
So like, so let me ask you this. So Godino, legitimate winery, end of school hours road, they have food trucks, you know, they had like the lobster truck recently.
It's very popular.
But they don't, places like Godino don't have to go to you because they're already operating under a winery.
Correct.
Permit and they can do usual and customary things that.
That's exactly the word.
Okay.
And that's what a lot of you think happened.
Yeah, yeah, and that's anyway, I don't want to belabor it. I agree, we don't have to, we have to chase our tail in this regard, but I.
Well, so.
I still want to be clear that I I do think we're.
So I do.
We remain vulnerable.
I do want to say one thing is that ABC has changed. So in order in Virginia to to manufacture wine on a piece of property, you need to get an ABC permit and a federal permit. ABC has changed their manufacturer permit qualifications to actually require people to grow and produce wine.
Wow.
So that should chill anymore. I have three grapes and everything else I buy and resell.
Right.
Yeah.
That was happening in the whole.
Oh, absolutely.
And everybody saw the problem with that and ABC said, whoop.
Okay.
This is not legitimate.
When did that change?
I think eighteen months ago, like a year and a half ago.
But is it grandfathered?
Yeah, they can't, they're not gonna come in and revoke people's permits. But I just wanted to let you guys know that.
That changed.
Our our ABC agent told us that and he said it was a real problem.
Yeah, it was like fifty percent of production has to come from your fruit. There's like the whole dandelion wine in a mason jar. I'm now a farm winery.
Well, probably what we'll do then is pull language from similarly sized counties and see how they handle this and start to work on that.
Okay, but we don't.
I mean, there's three line items that are events, is there? Is it possible that we can combine all to just say events?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna wonder is, are these these event lines really that separate? Or are they sort of one action item that are?
You got nonprofits.
Yeah, there's nonprofits, vehicle access.
Oh, vehicle access to events, I didn't have that scrolled up. We'll probably leave vehicle access to events to the public safety committee. And we'll just take events, events sponsored by nonprofits and and take that all all at once.
Okay, we we'll put it on our agenda for the next quarterly meeting and who knows, we might just kill it. Because if there's no practical way to lay it out, I don't think we have to overdo it.
Nope.
Well, and if it if if there's some common sense permitting that can be put in place, that that might take care of the problem altogether.
Remind me, the family subdivisions, I haven't pulled that up.
Family subdivisions was, you know, that hasn't been increased since the, whether there was an opportunity to go ahead and and up that number.
Right.
Is to allow families more of an opportunity. I I still think that's a a good idea, but I I don't hear about it as much as I did at the time. You you know, Michelle, have you had to have a talk with anybody about that lately? Has it come up?
I mean, no, I mean, people ask about it, but I give them, you know, what the code says and. Either they can or they can't and they go on.
And the idea that is that if I'm not mistaken, it's the date.
So it was either the date or the amount of times.
But the date, the effective date.
Nineteen sixty-two.
Right, it was a question of whether it would be worth.
Bumping that up.
Right.
Yeah.
Something happened in the eighties that was a part of that, too, wasn't that, wasn't there something that? Some reason I thought there were.
Nothing's jumping out in my head right now.
Okay, all right.
Okay, but so the nineteen sixty-two date was based, if I remember correctly, it was if you if you if a a parent property or has been subdivided anytime after that date, it cannot be.
You have five subdivisions.
Right.
Right.
Since that date.
Since that date.
Yep. Which when you start thinking, doing the math on the number of generations, I mean, that's what, three generations have passed? Have you exhausted?
Right.
A lot of the divisions or have your neighbors exhausted them for you? And maybe you need some divisions.
Yep. Which I think is how we got into that conversation.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, you're on the front lines, Michelle.
It's first come, first served, whoever gets to it first, yeah.
I think the one the one thing that at least I find encouraging is that recent accessory dwelling unit application on Ridgeview. That's to me, like, our policy objective should be anytime you have young people who want to live here and work here and there's a mechanism for for them to do that on their family's property, we should encourage that.
And that's what.
I'm glad that went the way it did.
We're tending to see with a lot of the ADU permit applications is either the parents want to build that smaller home and give their bigger home to their children to come back to. So they can, you know, still age and age in place there or vice versa. You know, get them a starter, get them going in the county and.
Yeah, I think if we if we remain open to those applications, I think we're achieving what I think is an important policy objective, which is encourage young people to live here.
And I just want to add, I agree with you, however, I I would not expressly base it on age, just for broad purposes. I do want to say, though, that I am against any kind, I'm hard against any kind of looking at opening up more subdivisions because I am not convinced the state's not gonna do it. And I'm not gonna, I'm not convinced that the state is not going to in the next ten years tell us that we have to allow multifamily by right. That legislation is circulating all across the United States.
Yep.
And I'm also not convinced that they're not gonna require us at some point, maybe to a maximum, you know, we're a Dillon state. So if they tell us to do it, that we don't get to say no.
Right.
So for now, I feel comfortable with the ADUs and saying, hey, there's now two times the amount of by right development that can happen if it's exercised. Now, the fact that we're not on GIS and the fact that you have to go down to the courthouse to look at the records, which we need to preserve, and I'm all about preserving those records, by the way, in the new courthouse. I think we really need to do that for title verifiability and all kinds of things, which, you know, really protect property values. But I really do think that we might lose control of some of the protections that we have because we don't.
Yeah.
Get to really say.
So you're saying don't relax it ourselves?
I would not relax it right now.
Okay, if if you all want to keep and preserve the county, then I I'll, I agree with you, I I wouldn't touch it.
Ms. Comer? Ms. Comer, I think you were gonna say.
All I was gonna say was that I I have had a couple of constituents ask about family subdivisions. It just as we were talking about, your question was, do people ask about it? Do you hear about it? They, my answer to you would be yes. So that's all I was gonna say.
Well, it seems like it will be agreeable if we go ahead and prioritize the event work and then take up family subdivisions. And then the last item would be the temporary structures.
Good.
Good. And thanks for, I just want to say thanks for being timely on the comprehensive plan. There was a period of time where that was not happening and you guys.
We could wait another year.
There there's an email going between some planning commissioners that they're on this. And I was just like, wow, this is incredible, thanks.
Well, I have to say, you know, I I know that I'm gonna regret it if I say, I really think it will be a lot better than it went last time because it's only five years. I'm sure I will live to regret that phrase, but I do think there will be some, I'm sure, minor changes and some issues to and topics to revisit and add information to. But I do believe that it will be a much much more workable version than it was last time.
So for this, you don't need a a motion or anything, you just now you know.
No, as long as we are on the same page, I think we're fine.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, moving on to board committee reports. Recreational facilities authority, Ms. Comer.
Um, fodder sack, fodder sack, fodder sack, fodder sack. That is what they're working on. And then, of course, the playground and the basketball courts, all of that good stuff. If you know of anyone who might want to be a sponsor for fodder sack, please send them to the committee, to myself. We'll help direct them to the right place. We'll help them, we'll gladly help them sponsor the race. And the races, this is the second month in a row, I haven't been able to say the exact date. I want to say April twelfth, maybe, it's sometime in April, ten.
It is the twelfth.
Okay, yeah. It is, it's a fun, fun is not quite the right word. It's a very rewarding race to complete. Please, if you have walkers and and runners in your circle, please recommend it.
All right, we, public safety, do we know when we're gonna meet?
We met in December or so, presumably next this month or in March, yeah.
Planning commission, I looked at your agenda, you've got a bunch of it.
We have six public hearings on the agenda for the next planning commission.
What are those?
Mostly tourist homes, but a few other things as well. And then we're gonna sit down and map out our, some of our work on the comp plan. I think some folks wanted to start doing the kind of fire fire hall, open forums sooner rather than later. I'd prefer to wait till I know it's not going to snow and start like take, do that intake April through August. And in the meantime, invite government employees, like I spoke to Mr. Stevens before the meeting. One of the things I'm sure we'll need to update is the information on emergency services in the county because there have been quite a few changes. Information on the broadband project, you know, items, affordable housing, items that are easily recognizable as having had changes in the last five years. Start getting both government and non-government entity input on those items and taking careful consideration how to craft them for this version. And then doing community intake during the longer days and milder months.
That's good sense. Fire levy board, you met?
Oh, yeah, we did, we we met, we had a great meeting. I passed along our comments and they were well received insofar as the transparency efforts that the, or at least the transparency that the fire levy board provides and possibly making it a more efficient meeting. So what we decided to do is just make time slots and we could, you know, tell people when they can show up and they get, you know, they'll have their ten minutes. And we talked about the twenty-five thousand dollar capitaling, well, from ten to twenty-five thousand dollars. And everybody was, you know, happy and thrilled with that amount. And so, yeah, we had a good meeting.
Excellent. All right, into the treasurer reports.
Very good, everything is looking good here. With the exception of meals and lodging, I know that's one that we talked about last time, it's coming back to. But we did get the second quarter deposit in January. And to date, receipts are four point four percent less than the same period last year. So I think for the year, I think we will probably be thirty to forty-five thousand dollars short of our budget. But do remember that I've been reporting for the last couple of months that sales tax receipts are running twenty to thirty thousand dollars ahead. So I think sales will at least to a large degree, if not fully, balance out meals and lodging.
It looks like, it looks like for the first time in four or five fiscal years that we're not seeing a year on year increase in our cash on hand. I mean, we're obviously like right on where we were last year. I assume, and I I know I've talked to Mr. Curry about this or we've talked in meetings, but those those increases, a lot of those were through the pandemic, right? So you had, you had COVID relief money, you had additional sales tax revenue, meals and lodging tax revenue that oddly seemed to increase during the pandemic. Is that, is that correct? And are there any other factors that would be bringing our cash balance back to the prior year level as opposed to an increase like we've seen previously?
Yes, I think the other significantly contributing factor is that we have used to date six hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance for capital projects in fiscal twenty-five. And some of that we expect to pay ourselves back when, for instance, a couple of the volunteer agencies pay their proportionate share of the life packs that we work.
Oh, right.
And that's starting to come in now. So that's not reflected here, I was just handed one of the agency's checks today. But that use of six hundred thousand dollars so far is contributing to that.
Right, that makes sense.
Year to year being the same cash wise.
As as we start on the budget cycle, it would be interesting to know how falling interest rates are impacting our cash on hand also.
Yes, I just actually looked at interest earnings today because we got part of, but not all of, the January interest earning report today. And so far, it looks like we are on track to meet our budget for the year, interest wise. But you're right, as those rates continue to decline, that may not be the case.
Thank you.
Anything else under treasurer's reports? I didn't see anything. All right.
Circuit court clerk's revenue report is here, as it has been every month for the last six to seven months. Nothing, nothing off track here.
Would be interesting to see previous year comparison kind of things. Just seeing where we are in the current year doesn't really tell me if we're seeing increases or not. I don't know how much trouble that is.
I think what we could do, the easiest thing, I don't know that it helped, though, is to just put last year's report in the file as well.
Okay, that works.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Review of legal matters. Had that one.
Or did you work on anything on the legal matters?
Company four and that whole mass is still in a holding pattern?
It's still in holding pattern.
It's still in a holding pattern. Uh, Mr. Kepst, thought it was gonna encounter in April, but it turns out it's not. So it's gonna be a little bit more, uh, fixed report than Gattino.
Supreme Court-wise?
Yes. So we don't have an answer there. Um, and then the other thing that was more, more recent, that is significant is that the county was dismissed as a party in the, uh, Seven Ponds case.
Okay.
That happened last Friday.
Excellent.
So the, uh, going back to company four, if the Supreme Court takes a pass on it, just from a procedural perspective, does that mean that the appeals court decision holds?
That means, yes, if they won't take the appeal, then the decision of the Court of Appeals will stand and the case be remanded.
Oh, it will be remanded back to.
Our cert court here, right back down to court, decision on, within the guidelines that that appeal decision.
Okay, so it will be remanded back to the law.
It, it will be, it's not over. We go back where we started.
I just hope the Supreme Court decides to take it. Um, I think that's all under there unless anybody else has interest.
No.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, matters presented. We've talked so much. We had such good inter- interest exchanges today.
Matters presented by the board. I'll change it up this time. Mr. Carney.
Oh, I didn't know I was going first.
No, I've changed it up. Welcome to my world.
Um, no, I think the only thing I was gonna talk about is if we didn't get to it and didn't, was the money for the park. And I was just gonna just really lobby for them, but I, my lobbying efforts have fallen on Goodyear, so without having to do anything.
Mr. Whitson?
No, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Well, talking about the park, I, I perhaps foolishly waded into, um, Facebook exchange about the use of the park at night. And, um, is it still true that individuals can call ahead and go to, no, there's no use of the park at night?
No.
Because there are apparently people using the park at night when there are no events. So I will, I will go back and make it clear. Of course, I always said, for best guidance, call county administration.
If you go to the park outside, you'll see how they are supposed to go. You can only go during the dark sky nights and you need to make.
It was, it was a little, I would say it was a little confusing whether it was only during events or if it was available all the time by reservation. Um, but it's good to know that it's only during events. And then I, um, I had someone re- asked me if they could request it during a weekday and I just referred them to you, Crystal.
Like during a regular daytime hours?
Yeah, yeah.
They're reserved all the time.
So you'll, you'll get a, you'll get a call for that too. But thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to get it right in my mind and, and I thought it was unfortunate that people, um, kind of had an expectation that it would be available on demand twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week because I can't, I can't think of that happening in any locality. All local parks closed at desk. So, um, and really for the, um, the safety and security of the neighbors.
Yeah, that's, yeah, big deal.
Is that on the website, that it closes at dusk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and it's.
But.
I think it's posted.
Yes, it is posted. But then, you know, there's always people who are gonna push it.
Oh, sure.
So.
Huh, interesting.
It's all right. I'll go back and, I'll go back and wade back in foolishly and clear it all up.
And before a lot of that got streamed out, I mean, what I would do routinely is, is ask the sheriff to send deputies through there. And I don't know if they're still doing that because the fence seems to have helped a lot.
Ms. Comer?
So I have a few things, sorry. Um, first, I, I, you know, in preparation for the budget season, I was looking at all of our, the requests, the funds requests, which made me start looking at, um, some of those organizations. And I was trying to dissect and see if there were overlapping services that we've been paying for or, um, complimentary services that maybe one organization isn't well versed about another. And I, so I started digging on a couple of things and, um, I wonder if any of my colleagues here would be interested in hearing from the Falkir Free Clinic. Um, I know I haven't heard from them since I've been on the board and they do some really cool things. Um, and, you know, I happen to know that they have a partnership with, um, Laurel Ridge for, uh, some of the dentistry programs. Um, and again, it just made my brain think about all of these organizations. Are they, are they aware enough of what the others do so that they can, we can make every single dollar stretch? Can they leverage the services of others? So Falkir Free Clinic was one that if other, um, if any of my colleagues were interested in hearing about what they do and how many Rappahannock citizens they serve and do our citizens know they can go there, all of that good stuff.
It's been a while, so I would like to.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah. The second one on that group, um, up list was the Civil War Trails. So, um, that really took me down a rabbit hole this weekend. Well, I was on their Facebook page and then really picking the brain of the tourism coordinator in Falkir County. This is another group that we pay into and they do some really neat things. And I just wonder, do other organizations, um, fully understand what they're doing and can we leverage that and make that money stretch? Um, and I've been in touch, I've been emailing back and forth with, um, Drew Gruber. So I've been in touch with him, but again, I don't know when's the last time he's come here and shared all the cool things that he does, um, with us. So I was just wondering if any of, any of you all might have an appetite to hear that. So that's that. I also want, of course, I need to, um, wave the big banner for, um, Amosville Market, formerly known as Hackley Store, maybe forever known affectionately as Hackley Store. Um, she has brought a great smile and a great cup of coffee to that end of the county. So I encourage anybody, if you haven't stopped by and met Jessica, please do so. Um, her pistachio baklava or baklava, however you pronounce it, is to die for. I love it. Um, and then the last thing I probably should have said, oh, I'm sorry, I have two more things. I'm talking as fast as I can. Um, the, and these last two things, I probably should have brought them up when, um, Dr. Grimsley was here because they are, they're kind of surrounding the school. The first is totally feel-good, but I just, I want our community leaders to know about it. Um, it's no secret that I have a son who plays, he's an, of high school athletes. So I'm in and around a lot of our, um, schools' children and professionals, both here at home and, um, when they are away, wearing the blue and gold and representing Rappahannock. And they do, they, we, you all, we should be proud of them. Um, and the example I'm gonna use, a couple weeks ago, the, um, we were at an away game and they went to play the Star Spangled Banner and it wouldn't queue up. It wouldn't queue up. So everybody's staring at each other, right? And this small group of people just started to, they just, you know, started to shyly sing the Star Spangled Banner. Um, and then it, it got weird and a Jackson District resident, I won't call her out by, by name, just in case she would hate that. She has a beautiful voice and standing there in the school, you know, not her own, she then in turn led the, um, Star Spangled Banner. And I thought that was really cool and I just was really proud at that moment. Um, and then lastly, I participated in the mock interviews at the high school on Friday and, um, the, one of the young ladies that I interviewed, she has joined one of our fire, our vol-, she's a county volunteer and it is a direct result of, um, Catherine Waters' efforts and the cool things that they were doing at the school. So I just wanted, I want, again, I wanted our community leaders to know that seeds that were planted in this young person's head year, a year ago, because she told me it was something that had happened last year, led her to join and volunteer and give, you know, um, give of her time freely, um, to our community in our county.
That's awesome.
So that's it, sorry. It was a lot, but I thought it was important stuff.
Um, I know they're in the emergency medical responder, um, course now in the school and so all the, I don't know how many are in that class, but, um, hopefully by the end of the semester, we'll have a bunch of new, uh, EMRs that can assist.
That's great.
Yep.
I just feel like it would be remiss of me not to say, having sat on the Public Safety Committee, where that was a seminal idea and knowing that Mr. Fraser beat the drum to pursue the safer grant for years and years and years. Thank you so much to my former colleague, Ron Fraser, for being so insistent as this county pursue safer grants and what a difference they can make in the life of not only people that live here, but our young people.
The schools are doing great things and, um, that's exciting. And I, Darren, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you want to, um, say anything about the, um, medical kit situation that we're in now that we're not using the hospitals? I think it would be good for everybody to know the update.
Certainly. Um, and the school program is a direct result of safer. That was federal funding that came down, so that's been great. Um, I, speaking, so our department partnered with both, uh, Flynn Hill and Sperryville Rescue and we made our cutoff on the thirty-first to go over to the, we turned in our narcotics to Falkir Hospital and we're, um, we're up and running now.
And do you have kind of the process? Is there anything that you want to share with the board on that?
We are going to, so one of the agreements, although we're doing it independently, we're all doing the same, the same way for narcotic security. We're all using a system called Narcotic Box or Narc Box. Um, it's, uh, it takes two providers to be able to, um, record use and wasting of narcotic medications. Um, it does provide a safe, secure environment so we can track them for once they come into our system. We know, um, but looking at your phone, you can, you know where they are in terms of what ambulances they're assigned to, what lockers they're in, um, who's in possession of them. So it's a great system. Um, I think we just had a few, we're still lagging behind on getting some DEA, um, responses back. It's just, the system has been overwhelmed and they're, they're catching up. Falkir Hospital has agreed to give us a few weeks, uh, for some of the stations. They're still working through this, but it's a no fault of their own. It's been a very arduous project.
So right now, the county's managing, managing your ALS fourteen-hundred, company seven?
Yes.
And company five also, or they don't have narcotics?
Yeah, company five is currently just a basic life support, no, no narcotics there. So we're, um, providing for an ambulance at station four, Flynn Hill, two ambulances at Sperryville and the fourteen-hundred unit.
Okay. And then how, and then company nine, I know it's complicated. Um, so has I, has I moved in a good direction?
Uh, last, the last time I spoke to them was about a week ago. They were on track to get up and running, but their hospital system has allowed them to continue till April first. They followed the JCO guidelines that the state kind of urged hospitals to Falkir was a little.
Okay.
So thank you for all your efforts.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's a lot of counties that probably aren't even close to where we are right now.
It's, being small allows us to be agile and sometimes that's a greater advantage.
Yep. Thank you. So that was my matter presented by the board, except it was presented by Darren. All right, now.
We, uh, move to the judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any input?
Y'all don't want to talk something?
No. It's clear when the agenda doesn't have much on it, it's just.
Four forty-three. We did pretty good.
Yes, sir.